Good evening colleagues.
Good evening.
Please be seated. Once again I'd like to welcome everyone to this meeting of Newcastle City Council. Once again, we will be using the mobile voting system as you're all aware and we'll start with the usual test. We haven't given it up yet. So can I ask that members now access their device and submit a response to the test vote? And please raise your hand if you need any help. Fire away. Come on, sort yourselves out. Is everybody happy with it?
Yeah.
Right. Can I ask if there are any apologies?
Thank you Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Allison, Durant, Forbes, Gallagher, Hindmarsh, Hobson, Lovett, Sharon Patterson, Karen Robinson, Todd and Margaret Wood.
Any more? Beecham. Councillor Beecham is here. Right. Does councillor agree the minutes of the meeting held on the 2nd of October 2019? Agreed. Right. Councillor Higgins?
There is a slight amendment. I think there was a motion about cycling. Being a very keen cyclist, I did contribute to that motion but my name's not mentioned in the minutes as having contributed.
Has it agreed that change is added?
Yep.
Now, we've been notified of the sad death of Sandra Gill-Fillan, former Conservative councillor in the Jesmond Ward in the 1990s. On behalf of the council, I'd like to offer condolences to her family and I will now ask councillor to stand for a minute's silence please as a mark of respect. Thank you colleagues. On behalf of councillor, I would like to say a few words about members of the senior staff team who will be leaving the council in the near future. Firstly, Helen Dickinson joined the council from Her Majesty's Treasury four years ago and has made a huge contribution to the city in that time, steering policy development locally and advising on government policy on key areas such as the devolution agenda, Brexit planning, the environment, air quality and most recently on climate change. She leaves the city this month to travel the world for six months before returning to central government next year. I'm sure councillor will also join me in paying tribute to Ewan Weir who will leave the council in December following a long and distinguished career. A former social worker, Ewan joined the council as Director of Adult Social Services in October 2007 before appeared as Acting Chief Executive in 2012. Ewan became Director of People in 2013, leading a new directorate and making a real difference to the lives of our most vulnerable citizens and families. Ewan is a passionate equalities champion and has been a great servant to the city and to the council over his time here. I'm pleased to say he's not retiring completely and will be taking on other roles in the city and the region and will continue to be a partner and colleague to us in Newcastle. Next, can I remind members that the Bishop of Newcastle will be leading the Remembrance Day service for the city this Sunday. Please meet in the Brunswick Chapel for 10:30am. I'd also like to remind members that the carol service and lighting of the Ben Christmas tree will take place on Thursday the 28th of November at 5:30pm in the Grand Entrance. I hope that you and your families will all join me and the Mayor of Ben for the event. And before we move on to the following items of business, I would like to ask you to slightly change the order of the agenda to allow petitions and public questions to be asked first before moving on to the presentation by NEXUS. Is that agreed? Thank you colleagues. Moving on to correspondence, does councillor agree to receive the correspondence from the Foreign and Commonwealth Office and the Home Office? Agreed, thank you. Okay, moving on to petitions then now. We have received four petitions this month and firstly, I'll call on Dylan Kirkley to present a petition from the West Denton Save Our Field campaign.
Excellent, there you go. Look as it comes to the microphone. Microphone. Okay. Don't be going shy. Okay, that's okay. Dylan, do you want me to do it instead? Oh. Don't, 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 look, it's okay. Will you hold my hand while that's a bit? Yeah? Just a minute. Don't cry, please don't cry.
Hi, good evening. Dylan wanted to say, we the undersigned with respect of the field next to West Denton Community Centre, call upon Newcastle City Council to confirm that they are not going to build 60 dwellings, 10 affordable, including a specialist unit for young people in care up to the age of 18. That the city council will retain the field in the new development and allocate plans as open space. That city council will reinstate the field as a football field acknowledging there is insufficient sports provision in the outer west, especially for young people. That part of the field will become a neighbourhood park with 20% set aside as a wildlife refuge, supporting the extensive bat population and other native species that depends on the field. That skate park be rebuilt on a superior specification immediately. Can I also point out that Dylan is a seven-year-old young boy and as you can see he's in a chair and this is one of the very few activities that the skate park provides Dylan with to make him feel part of his own community and that's been taken away from Dylan. He can't play most of the other sports that all the other kids on this estate can and the one thing that he could get involved in has been taken away and he's been deprived of. Thank you.
And I'll call on councillor Bell to respond.
Thank you Lord Mayor and can I pay a particular thanks to Dylan for coming tonight. And Dylan, even coming into a place like this at such a young tender age, is quite a daunting thing to do and I think you deserve a round of applause for making the effort on it. So Dylan, you can rest assured that I want to thank you for your petition and all those that have signed a petition and your comments will be considered very carefully by council. This council believes 100% in building homes for our growing city, allowing families to stay in neighbourhoods they love and newcomers to settle in our city. But what we have seen with this plan application is people seeking political office should use this for their own ends, spreading false rumours and misinformation. This is particularly bad when it comes to the proposed children's home and our responsibility as corporate parents. As every councillor and everyone seeking to be a councillor should know, where children do come into care, we have an obligation to meet them, to keep them safe and at the heart of our aspirations is the need in many cases to enable children and young people to stay as close as possible to home, maintain family connections and friendships whilst continuing to attend the same school. So, to those that are spreading rumours of a barstool opening anywhere, I ask them to think seriously about the children that they are stigmatising when they spread those rumours. We have recently entered the general election period and while planning matters are very much business as usual, I think this particular issue has clearly been turned into a campaign issue for some and I am not prepared to let our need for homes or the need to look after children become a political row. With that in mind, I've instructed officers to pause this application until the new year. We'll continue to listen to residents and review our approach by 2020. There is a meeting already planned for residents with the developer tomorrow that will go ahead for public information but work in this council has paused for the rest of this year. Whatever the future is for the site, you're right to say Dylan, that all children regardless of their background need somewhere to play. The skate park was vandalised in March and we repaired it but it was damaged again in May so it was fenced off by the council to prevent further problems. When we reviewed the site, it was clear that there was a risk of accident here and a decision was taken to remove the park. Whatever happens next, we need to get young people something suitable in the area and I will be working with the officers to look at what can be done. So, thank you all who have attended tonight, we are listening to your voice and we will continue to discuss the site with you. Thank you Dylan.
And next I'll call on Mr Metcalf to present a petition regarding the cycle lanes along Heaton Road.
We the undersigned wish to express our concern at the city council's proposals to improve cycle lanes along Heaton Road. The existing cycle lanes introduced in 2002 were a welcome move to increased safety for cyclists. However, a gross lack of maintenance by Newcastle City Council have now rendered these unsafe. Many of us have cyclists in our family and support initiatives to increase cycling provision and safety. However, these further improvement proposals have been badly planned and certainly not communicated well as no consultation has been given to the concerns of residents. These proposals will cause inconvenience and disruption as well as being unsafe for pedestrians, cyclists and motorists. We call on the council to hold a series of meetings and conversations with residents in order to hear objections and to revise the proposals. There's 320 names on our petition.
Thank you Mr Metcalf, I'll call on councillor Ainsley to respond.
Yeah, Lord Mayor, thank you. And thank you Mr Metcalf. The council has consistently highlighted that central government is not providing enough funding to deliver as much road maintenance as we would wish. Making suitable improvements that benefit the residents is vital and in the case of Heaton Road, we have been talking to local residents throughout the development of these proposals. This has included a platform to leave comments online and a number of drop-in sessions and public meetings, including one that was attended by the Director of Public Health to stress the importance of such changes to our city. I must stress that every resident on Heaton Road has received a leaflet advising them how they could find more information. There has also been coverage of the proposals in City Life magazine, videos across social media and other reports. All comments made throughout this process have been listened to by officers and the most recent set of discussions was pulled together into a single document of responses that were shared with anyone who had been involved. Despite this robust approach, it is clear that not everyone will agree with the responses or indeed the approach. However, in the context of our climate emergency, it is important that we improve sustainable alternatives to car use and we need to make hard decisions. I see little benefit in having a series of further meetings with residents that would only serve to make some happy and alienate others. Our original neighbourhood plan received more than 2,500 comments. Reopening this discussion would simply be going over old ground. As other petitions on the agenda tonight illustrate, if we seek to make changes to this scheme, we may then subsequently be challenged on why we haven't delivered on our proposals. But I do accept the petition, Mr Metcalf, and will present it to officers. Thank you.
Right, for the next petition, I'll call on councillor Hall to present a petition regarding the road layout in Hyde Terrace, Gosforth.
Thank you Lord Met. On behalf of the residents of Gosforth, I wish to present this petition which says, we undersigned call upon Newcastle City Council to propose and implement alternatives to the road layout in Hyde Terrace, Gosforth, to alleviate the rat-running and poor-driving experienced by residents in the street which has gotten worse since adjacent streets were blocked off by the council in recent years. And there's 55 signatures.
Thank you councillor Hall, I'll again call on councillor Ainsley to respond.
Thank you Lord Mayor and thank you for the petition. Hyde Terrace, as many of you know, is a street in Gosforth in the area between Church Road and Kristen Road and it's a busy residential street with many schools and amenities close by, as well as the metro line. We've been aware for a number of years that the streets in this area can be used by non-residents to cut through to the main roads in the city in attempts to bypass the main traffic and we've already taken several measures to try and reduce this, consulting with residents on all of these proposals to find solutions. Alterations were made to the street including making it exit-only at the northern end, road humps and other traffic harming measures to minimise the number of people cutting through the street and to improve the poor driving conditions experienced by some residents in the street and I have received several emails this week from residents who have explained some of their difficulties. These alterations, as well as the closures on surrounding streets, were all subject to a public consultation which included asking directly if residents would like to close the road to through traffic. We involved local ward councillors at that time who did a lot of canvassing of opinion and we subsequently received a petition asking us not to implement the closure. So I'm now responding to a petition asking us to do the exact opposite was previously suggested. However, it should be clear that it's such a change would be in line with our policies and given other priorities for staff within my portfolio area. The only way we could ask is we can ask staff to revisit the previous proposals and if local ward councillors are absolutely clear that this is the way forward, then we'll certainly take that into consideration. Thank you.
And for the final petition, I'll call on councillor George Patterson to present a petition on behalf of the residents of New Binning Hall.
Thank you Lord Mayor. We the undersigned petition Newcastle City Council to provide a 360 degree camera equipped with night vision as recommended by Northamia Police to counteract serious antisocial behaviour from organised gangs of youths, both male and female, talking in the gaoler field. Lord Mayor, the request for this particular camera is to identify criminal activities to the rear of the gaoler field. And it's signed by 741 residents. Thank you.
I'll call on councillor Penny Evans to respond.
Thank you Lord Met. Thank you for this petition which I will accept and pass on to officers. It's important to note that all camera deployments should be part of a wider plan to tackle issues of crime and disorder and led by neighbourhood plans. So it's really important that its all partners working together. So I accept the petition and will pass it on to officers.
Thank you. If we move on then to item seven which is public questions and addresses. We have received one request to address council this evening and I invite Tamar Pittman please to address council.
Good evening Lord Mayor and councillors. On the 10th of October, Scotland passed a bill which will ban pavement parking across the country from 2021. Pavement parking is an issue for people here in Newcastle too as it creates obstacles for pedestrians, including wheelchair users, parents with pushchairs, the visually impaired and the elderly. It's not just a problem in one or two areas either. Pavement parking is commonplace in many parts of the city. Residential areas with narrow roads and at least one car per household tend to be the most badly affected. 1930s estates are particularly problematic. Pavements were not designed to act as parking bays and as such, they're easily damaged by vehicles parking on them. The resulting uneven pavements and curbs create trip hazards, making pavements dangerous for all users. These repairs need to be funded and ultimately it's the residents of the city who pay for these repairs through the council tax. If pavement parking was prevented, that money could be saved and spent on positive improvements rather than repairing pavements which need not have been damaged in the first place. As England has yet to pass a bill similar to Scotland's, stopping pavement parking must be carried out by local authorities. Councils can restrict pavement parking by making a traffic regulation order, or TRO, which civil enforcement officers can then enforce and thus generate revenue for investment in pavement repairs. A blanket ban on pavement parking across the whole of the city would not be easy to achieve but by introducing traffic regulation orders in specific places around schools and nurseries in residential areas, accessibility for residents would be improved. It would also have the added benefit of reducing average traffic speeds as motorists would be obliged to park fully on the roads, thereby reducing the available road width so drivers would slow down automatically, keeping our streets safer for all road users. Introduce 20 mile per hour zones alongside a ban on pavement parking in those areas and the speed restrictions would be self-enforcing. Local residents have informed me of the problems they face from pavement parking in the West End, such as Sladeford Lane, Soloth Avenue, Ovington Grove, Disington Place and Stocksville Avenue estates in West Farnham, as well as Willow Avenue, Nunsmore Road, Cedar Road and the Burns Estates in East Farnham. I'm aware of the scale of the problem in the north of the city, such as Five Admirals Estate and St Nicholas Avenue area in Gosforth and Hillsview Avenue and Woods Estates in Kenton. In the east of Newcastle, both High Heaton and Low Heaton areas face significant problems from pavement parking with Warwick Street and roads around Hotspur Primary School being particularly badly affected. I would like to ask the city council to consider implementing TROs to stop pavement parking in those of streets affected, as well as those others identified by local residents' concerns and complaints where inconsiderate parking causes extensive problems for pedestrians. I would also ask that consideration is given to using TROs to tackle pavement parking on all residential streets within a five-minute walk to schools to improve both safety for pedestrians and remove barriers from people walking to school. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll call on councillor Kemp to respond.
Thank you Miss Pittman for the petition. You might be aware that this is an issue that has exercised the vast majority of elected members in this chamber, probably from the first day that they arrived to be a representative in the city. So all the issues you raise in the petition are well-known and accepted. It is a serious problem and causes significant problems for many of our citizens. Fundamentally, this is caused frequently by selfish behaviour of a small number of people and also obviously the increase of multiple car ownership homes. Pavement parking does cause accessibility and road safety problems for many people. In particular, it's a concern for people with mobility issues and parents pushing young children in pushchairs. It also places significant financial pressures on a council already suffering significant financial pressures of austerity. The current powers require the introduction of TROs on a street-by-street basis. This requires consultation, statutory process and then, if implemented, extensive signage which clearly is not an easy nor actually satisfactory solution for a recognised city-wide, regional problem and national problem. Whilst there is a blanket pavement parking ban in London, the Department of Transport recognises that this is a national issue and there is actually currently an inquiry underway. We have given evidence. There's been a series of fact-finding seminars by the DFT who have been working alongside councils and key organisations to gather information in order to shape policy. Before considering implementing traffic regulation orders and the very torturous process I've just outlined, it's important to understand the government's long-term vision and any new powers and indeed any new funding that might be provided to the city in order to give a more structured and cost-effective solution. Once the findings have been released, I will be asking officers to prioritise this and prepare some options for consideration. In the meantime, any immediate road safety concerns around schools will be picked up by the officers with support from head teachers. So I would urge councillors, members of the public, if they're aware of specific issues, please do take it up. The schools through their parents, through the school governors' boards, the head teachers and our school officers team would work to find solutions with our high-waist officers with specific crisis issues. Thank you very much.
Miss Pittman, you've got the right to respond for a minute, one minute.
Thank you councillor Kemp for responding to my question rather than petition. I feel it's rather short-sighted because such a ban in specific areas would stop vehicles causing problems for pedestrians. I appreciate that there has been an inquiry which has been going on for some time but this started a few years ago and is no closer to finalisation. I read about one a couple of years ago.
Not a point of order. Carry on Miss.
Thank you. You rightly mentioned that quite a lot of money is already spent by the city council on repairs at the moment. I would imagine that that money is greater than the amount of money that a few TROs and signage in specific streets would cost. It would alleviate the problem we have for the moment until the outcome of this inquiry occurs and then a more city-wide, a bigger response can be made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll now move back to the NEXUS presentation which is item five on your agenda. I'll now invite Tobin Hughes, Managing Director of NEXUS, to give this presentation to council.
Thank you Lord Mayor and good evening to the elected members of the council. It's very nice to be invited back, thank you very much for having me. Before I go any further, I should perhaps explain that on your agenda it says update from NEXUS, whereas the slide you see in front of you slightly contradicts that. Just to explain, Newcastle City Council is of course now a member of the North of Tyne Combined Authority and the North of Tyne Combined Authority works together with the North East Combined Authority on transport matters on a joint transport committee. My new role is to advise the joint transport committee on transport policy matters whilst... at the same time continuing to lead Nexus as its managing director, so I now have a bit of a dual role. So the slides I shall now briefly talk you through address both points, some key points from regional transport events, but also some matters particularly relating to Nexus. And we'll start with the regional transport plan. It's many years now since this area refreshed its statutory transport plans, so much so indeed that we're all continuing from plans that were written in 2012. So now that there is a joint transport committee overseeing all of the area in terms of transport, what better time than to set a new transport vision and associated plans, taking us through up to 2037. A transport plan is a statutory document, it therefore needs to align with national policies, but it also needs to support local policies, particularly economic growth policies and plans and strategies that councils and other stakeholders have. Whilst the transport plan itself is under development and further discussions will continue to take place at the Joint Transport Committee over coming months, its key objectives are likely to be, of course, growing the economy of the North East area, but increasingly important, focusing the links between transport and public health, and making sure that the two speak to each other and that transport enhances people's lives. And not surprisingly, next on the agenda and of course of great importance to this council, is making sure that transport plays its role in enhancing air quality and reducing carbon emissions across the whole area. That is bound to come by encouraging alternatives to the car, whilst of course recognising the role that private cars do play. Nevertheless, there is an increasing desire to see better alternatives to private cars wherever a choice can be given. And finally, but very importantly, improving perceptions of the safety of the transport network, either as a user of public transport, or a user of the road system, or indeed as a pedestrian. We expect to see a draft ready for consultation in early 2020, and I look forward to engaging with members of the council on that. Looming up, perhaps even before that, is a significant bid that the region has been preparing to a government announcement on the Transforming Cities Fund. Now, I guess, given the circumstances today, when the government has ceased to be, as the election is called, it's important to note that the outgoing government does not bind any incoming government on this matter. But nevertheless, we've worked very hard as a region together to compile a bid, which we will shortly be asking the Joint Transport Committee for permission to submit, and we hope that any new incoming government will pick it up and consider it in line with the bid guidelines that we've been following. It is a major package of capital investment, which if this region were to secure it, could lead to some very transformative improvements in the city of Newcastle and in the wider area. As you can see, £111 million potentially on better bus corridors, buses hugely, hugely important to this city and to the surrounding area, plus investment for interchanges for all sorts of different forms of public transport. We're also, as a spin off piece of work, deeply engaged with the local bus companies and with the councils on developing a pipeline of bus investment schemes that will take us beyond even this funding bid. £59 million improving cycling and walking networks, better access to city centres, a big package of investment in major stations and interchange points, new park and ride sites proposed, and some very large schemes, two significant schemes in particular, on improving local rail services and the metro. The Northumberland Line, I'm sure members will be familiar with, is a proposal to reopen the line to Ashington to passenger services, and the Metro Flow project would be a huge investment in the metro system, removing a pitch point and allowing Nexus to increase the frequency of the metro system system wide throughout the day, and that will enable far more passengers to travel at much greater frequency. The guidelines we were following expected a decision in spring 2020, and we look forward to that being the case. Moving on to delivering a new metro fleet, this is already funding that has been announced, and which we have recently submitted a business case to the civil service to consider, and that will be awaiting an incoming government for approval, we hope. As members will be aware, it's a huge, huge investment for this area, one of the biggest transport investments in any single project, certainly for the metro system since it opened, but actually for public transport in the round, one of the biggest investments that we've seen. £362 million in total, of which £337 is government grant, the rest is local, but which contributes to an overall contract worth half a billion pounds, which is inviting bidders to build and maintain a fleet of new metro trains right up until 2030. We have had a number of bids in. I know it's a matter of debate and discussion. We have had some very good bids. We expect, once we've got approval from the government for the business case, to be able to announce the winning bidder early in the new year. But what I can say is, it will be transformative for passengers. This is what it's all about. The metro trains that we have are increasingly unreliable. They've served us extremely well for their 40 year life, but they are now past their design life, and as a result, they're failing on quite a regular basis, as any regular passenger on the metro will know or will tell you if you aren't one yourself. The urgency to invest and to get the new trains in place as soon as possible cannot be overstated. It is absolutely critical to daily lives of tens of thousands of people who rely on the system, but it's also hugely important for the economic destiny of the area, which relies upon the metro system in high degree. Part of the investment will see the Gosforth Depot site rebuilt completely, so that it's fit to maintain a new fleet of metro trains, and we do expect that the contract that is let will see training, employment, improvements and opportunities for the supply chain throughout the North East area and the wider UK through long term partnership arrangements. It will also see environmental benefits, the new trains will be much more energy efficient, and going back to my opening comments, it will truly transform the passenger experience. You will see what I mean when we unveil the designs in May, so we're really looking forward to that. We're looking forward to a positive government decision over the business case, and we're looking forward to cracking on with letting the contract as soon as we possibly can. This is part, of course, of a wider programme of investment in modernising the metro. Again, you probably, as elected members, do not need me to tell you the importance of the metro to this city and to the wider area, but it is of course going to play a crucial role in tackling the climate emergency in future months and years, helping people get out of cars, especially the most polluting types of vehicle, so that will help to achieve the clean air agenda, and also our ambitions for more and better jobs. Some figures which you may or may not know, about 36 million passenger trips are taken on the metro system every year. Tens of thousands of people use it to get into and out of towns and city centres and employment sites all over the region, including education, school, as well as numerous jobs. We've recently done an economic valuation of the metro system, which concluded that every single trip taken on the metro is worth £8.50 to the economy, and that is significant. It's economic valuation plus wider benefits, but the investment is necessary to support continuation of this system. And because of that, we've been investing £300 million over the last decade. Some of the members in this room were instrumental in securing that investment back in 2010, and Nexus has been delivering a programme of system renewal to replace key infrastructure elements ever since, new track, new bridges, new forms of technology in our control centres, any number of investments made so we can continue the performance of the asset for future generations and secure economic improvements. Stations have benefited from improved access for people with reduced mobility. We're in the middle of an ongoing programme to replace the overhead power lines. I should say, this always comes with an apology, because investment in a railway system often involves engineering works which disrupt passengers, so we do continually recognise the disruption to people's everyday lives, but we do try and keep line closures and disruption to an absolute minimum, but it is essential to help us into the future. The current capital funding runs out in 2021. We have been in discussion with the government ever since for continuation of this funding, and again, we look forward to hearing that funding being confirmed into the future. Finally, it would be remiss of me to give any presentation on transport infrastructure without mentioning the East Coast Main Line. I'm sure, again, a number of people in this room will be regular travellers on the line. Again, hugely, hugely important to our area economically and in terms of linking us socially to other parts of the UK and indeed Scotland. £15 million passengers a year, but it is aligned with difficulties. It's not received an infrastructure investment boost for many, many years, in fact, not since 1991, when it was electrified. As a consequence, it is now starting to struggle quite badly. Its infrastructure is in need of renewal anyway, and there are frequent failures of signalling of overhead line and of the track. There have been many reasons for delays, but it is now in decline when it comes to punctuality, and a constant sight on the departure boards in Newcastle Central Station is major delays for trains coming from the south and the north. Another issue that we have is capacity. It's only got one line in each direction.
Can I ask you to wind up, please?
Yes, Chair, Lord Mayor. And we need to do something about this for the longer term. This region needs to benefit from whatever national infrastructure investment is made in HS2 or in Northern Powerhouse Rail. So we're working with Network Rail and with others to make that case stick. That's the end of the presentation, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much to the members for listening. I'm very happy to take any questions.
Okay, we have 15 minutes for questions. Please make your questions succinct and not proceed it by a lengthy statement. First of all, councillor Stokel Walker.
Not sure how these things work. Is it on? Hi Tobin, a long time no see. Tobin, later on in this meeting, there's a motion requesting this council to halt the metro trains procurement process. I've got two questions about that for you, if that's okay. Firstly, as suggested in the motion, a Brexit risk premium included by Hitachi and could negatively damage the company's bid. Could you explain what that means, please? And then, secondly, could you, sorry, secondly, as advocated by the author of the motion, what do you think would be the financial and legal implications if the current procurement process was halted and reconsidered, as he is suggesting? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Stokel Walker, and it's nice to see you again, having mentioned people that were there at the time the investment was first secured. In terms of the metro fleet procurement process, I should begin my answer by saying I cannot, for reasons of commercial confidentiality, answer anything in terms of details about any of the bidders, and I do apologise for that, but we are in a live procurement process, and I cannot prejudice that by breaking any of the commercial confidences we have with the bidders. There has been much speculation in the media about the position of bidders. Things have been said about bidders being in or out, about reasons for that. I'm afraid I genuinely cannot comment on those, because it is a matter for the bidders in a confidential process. What I can say, though, is that Nexus is following a transparent and fair process in accordance with some utilities contracts regulations that were set in 2016, and these prevent discrimination against any bidders, and that includes unfair treatment of anybody, whether that's because you happen to like them, or you happen to have them in your local area. All bidders must be treated equally and on a level playing field, and it's not just Nexus that is bound by those regulations. All public bodies are bound by similar legislation that requires a fair procurement process to be carried out, and I would expect that locally based firms would want that to be the case because they themselves will be bidding for contracts in other parts of this country, and indeed in other parts of the European Union. It has been suggested that the procurement should be paused, as councillor Stokel Walker has mentioned. There is no legal basis for that. There is absolutely no legal basis to pause or cancel the procurement. So to do so would potentially incur millions of pounds in legal fees, that's the advice that we have, and it would also incur costs from, sorry, billions of pounds in legal fees and the costs of cancelling the procurement, I should say, together. So that would potentially incur refunding bidders' costs, having unfairly disrupted the procurement process, and it would also incur wasted costs that Nexus has incurred in setting out and running the procurement. Now, that is a bad state of affairs, but of course, that's nothing like as bad as the impact on passengers. I've already mentioned the position of the current fleet. It is undoubtedly one of the worst performing train fleets in the world, based on the evidence that Nexus uses to benchmark against other railway companies, and that's because of its age and some of the features of its design. And delaying or cancelling the procurement would add months, potentially years, to the procurement process, and as I've already said, there's no legal basis to do that in any event. And it would simply lead to yet more time added on to procuring the train fleet that the passengers using it every day so desperately need. So it isn't a position that I personally would advocate, and without a legal basis to do it, it would be very difficult to recommend to anybody. One final thing, if I may, because it has been discussed about the supply chain, and I did mention in my slides some of the points about the supply chain. We did very, very carefully consider when designing the procurement process, and we did liaise with the Joint Transport Committee and others closely on it. We designed the procurement process to encourage the use of the local supply chain. It isn't permissible in the contract regulations we follow to require bidders to use certain suppliers, but we can do things to encourage it. We did, for example, we held an event where we gathered more than 100 different local suppliers of rolling stock components and services, and we made them, we introduced them to all of the bidders, so that we could encourage the creation of new business relationships and partnerships, and I'm fairly confident that that will follow through into whoever is successful in winning the bid. We also were careful to try to minimise the environmental footprint of the programme. That is something we can specify, and one of the ways that bidders can choose to minimise the environmental footprint is to make sure that supplies and parts don't travel needlessly over long distances, so that's another way that they might choose to meet that requirement and attract a higher score in the evaluation process. So we did do everything we possibly could to make sure that local supply chain value was obtained, but always within the context of the law and the regulations that we have to follow.
Tobin, I've got, excuse me, Tobin, I've got four people who've indicated they want to question you. Are you willing to take them all at the end, if we ask them all at once?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor, followed by councillor Avery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Tobin, subsidised bus services are extremely important, particularly for our older residents in getting them out and about, meeting people, keeping them fit. I just wondered how confident you are that current levels of subsidised bus services will be maintained.
And councillor Avery, followed by councillor Hall.
Thank you. I, as you will know, sit on the Joint Transport Committee, over in scrutiny committee, and I was wondering whether you would be able to expand a bit more on some of the great additional programmes that I know are in our metro and light rail and heavy rail strategy that we might possibly be able to... might possibly be able to bid for after the Transforming Cities Fund, because obviously we all know in this council chamber that we need to significantly invest in our public transport in order to reach and meet the sorts of challenges that are coming in clean air and through climate change.
Councillor Hall, followed by councillor Higgins.
Thank you. Just a couple from me. Could you give us an update on the current situation with driver levels in the metro fleet and how this has impacted on things like shortages and cancellations? Any planned mitigations on that front? And also just to establish the regional transport plan, will that include the bus strategy that's been sort of outstanding for a little while at this point? And what your thoughts are on sort of the potential of bus franchising, although we've now learned that that's not possible due to the failure to get a Tynan-Wyer wide devolution deal, thanks to five Labour councils? So just your thoughts on that.
Councillor Higgins.
Yes. First of all, can I thank you for your presentation? I think it was excellent. I'm a councillor in the west end of the city, Benwell and Scotswood. And of course, we don't have the metro system in the west end of the city, and in fact, public transport is pretty appalling down there. So realistically, what are the prospects of having improved, possibly modern trams in the west end of the city to improve transport down there? And are these plans likely to be detrimentally affected by a planning application going before Planning Committee to build on the St James Metro site?
Over to you, Tobin.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Okay, I'll attempt to take those in order, probably the easiest way. So the first one was from councillor Taylor, who asked about the maintenance of subsidised bus services. I obviously wholly agree that subsidised bus services are an essential part of the transport infrastructure of the city, and whilst I do come here and speak a lot about metro for obvious reasons, we should never forget the importance of the bus network. It transports three quarters of the public transport overall load. Secured bus services or subsidised bus services account across Tynan-Wyer for about ten per cent of overall bus services. But they do tend to be where, well, they are always where a bus company finds them commercially unappealing to operate, and that is part of the role of Nexus, is to step in at that point and buy back socially necessary bus services, using a complex set of criteria, including local consultation and consultation with elected members over what defines socially necessary. But they do tend to be late at night or at weekends, early Sunday mornings. They do tend to be too hard to reach... in hard-to-reach places or school buses. The answer to the question is, even though the council and all the other authorities in the area have been through many years of funding pressure, and that funding pressure has transferred itself to a degree to Nexus over its budget, nevertheless, after lots and lots of liaison with the members of what is now the Tynan-Wyer Subcommittee, we have always tried to maintain all frontline services as Nexus as we go forwards. And that continues to be the case. Wherever we possibly can, we will provide ongoing frontline services without reductions. That has seen Nexus change its shape. There have been a number of years of funding pressure on our budget. We've cut our overheads, we have secured more cost-effective contracts and a range of other measures. We've also been perhaps assisted by a number of years of growth in the metro fare box. I think as we look ahead now and we're in discussions with the Tynan-Wyer Subcommittee and the councils who provide levy funding over what the next number of years look like, and there are a number of options, I think, for members to work through. So that budget process is being discussed as we speak. I'm reasonably confident that come what may, we'll be able to continue to provide frontline services without reductions for at least two more years. What the future looks beyond that, I think, is a matter for discussion, but I think in these current times, anything could happen on a national scene as well as locally. To councillor Avery's point about the metro and local rail strategy, for a number of years now, we've been operating under a new strategy that was set in 2016 by the Combined Authority then. And it set out firstly, a set of principles, which was that the area would look to expand the metro system by doing it jointly with the local rail network. Because just because one is a light rail system and the other is so-called heavy rail, nevertheless, they both provide connectivity on rails. And it was previously, in times long since gone, foreseen that the metro system would expand outwards in some radial manner. That is not the strategy we're operating to now. We are saying we will look to reopening disused or underused rail routes and expanding... either expanding the metro system to operate on them or indeed to take the local rail network and transform it so that as part of an integrated transport system, a bit like the London Overground, to those of you who know it, it becomes part of our wider city-region transport system. So all of those things continue to be the case. There are a number of areas then that could potentially benefit from new services that are likely to be worked on in the next couple of years. I've already mentioned the so-called Metro Flow Project. That's actually not a new destination, but it is boosting the frequency of the entire current system by removing a pinch point that happens to be in South Tyneside. But that pinch point, a bit like a traffic pinch point, actually causes disruption across the whole metro network. So by removing that pinch point and increasing the number of trains that will buy through the fleet order, we'll be able to actually increase Metro's frequency across the whole system throughout the day from five trains an hour to six trains an hour. And that will be a major benefit to the city centre here but across the whole network. Moving beyond that, I've already also mentioned the so-called Northumberland Line. Others know it as the Ashington and Blyth Line. That is reinstating ordinary rail service, but as part of an integrated transport offering. There are also opportunities to expand metro services through Washington, opening up an area that is really badly served, certainly by rail services, but also public transport in the round is quite difficult to serve there. West Newcastle has been mentioned as part of a different question, but West Newcastle has always been on the potential list for metro expansion. Actually, I'm going to answer that question now because it's a very short answer, I regret. Councillor Higgins, I can't comment on something that is going to the Planning Committee on Friday, other than to say future developments of the metro system may see opportunities to expand into West Newcastle. That is all I can really say at this point in time. It wouldn't be right for me to comment on a Planning Committee decision in the next couple of days. So yes, lots of opportunities around the whole area, more that I haven't had time to mention now. We will continue to work with this council and the others that we work for to try and make sure that we can expand local connectivity so there are sustainable transport options, rail, metro, bus and others, to as many of the residents in the area and businesses as we can possibly achieve. Finally, councillor Hall asked about the situation with metro drivers. It has been an issue, undoubtedly, in recent months. The position really is that the metro system is an easy target, to be honest with you, for other rail firms. And whilst it doesn't... it's not an ongoing issue, it has been an issue in recent months where two of the mainline train operating companies have opened operating centres based in the Newcastle area, and they do pay more than the metro does. It's a simple fact that a metro driver earns far less than they could earn if they were driving a mainline train. So it's fairly easy pickings for the mainline rail companies to come to the metro drivers and say, anybody want to come and work for us? You'll get an accelerated path through training because you already have had a lot of the basic training to drive a metro train. We also have had some issues with sickness and other issues, which are daily management issues, but compounded with a number of drivers leaving. It has left us depleted. What are we doing about it? The first thing is we have significantly increased the number of drivers that we train. We used to only train twelve a year, we're now training twenty-four a year, and that means that we'll be able to plug the gap in due course. However, training a driver is a relatively long process, so it's not that we can employ somebody today and they'll be out plugging that gap tomorrow. But all the time, again, regular metro users of the system will know that we are training drivers as we speak, and over the next couple of months, more new drivers will join the system. Every time, by the way, we advertise for new drivers, we get a huge surge of people applying. So people absolutely do want to be metro drivers, but from time to time, we do see people leaving. The second thing that we can do is a little more complex, and that is to negotiate a new set of terms and conditions with our train-driving colleagues, who have, as you would expect from a highly unionised group of staff, a number of aspirations themselves that they would like to meet. But we, as the operators and the management of the metro, have a number of things that we want to meet, the primary one being that there's a driver to drive every train that is in the timetable. And that has led to a negotiation which is unfortunately currently stalled. We shall see where that one leads, but ultimately, we want a train crew agreement that rewards our drivers appropriately for driving a really critical part of our public system and our infrastructure locally, whilst they feel proud to continue to serve the local communities here.
Okay, Tobin, can I ask you to wind up?
Yeah. The final question was about the bus strategy. Yes, it will be part of the regional transport plan. Bus franchising, well, it's out there as an option. Greater Manchester are developing a bus franchising scheme as we speak and consulting on it. We shall see where that goes. It's one of the tools available to certain areas, it would seem, not to ours at this moment in time. What's most important, really, though, through the transport plan, is to define what this area needs as outputs from the transport system, and then to look at what tools are needed, if any, to deliver it compared to what's available to us today. And that's the plan... that's the work that we'll do through that transport plan.
Okay, thank you very much, Tobin.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
We move on to item eight, which is the Audit Committee Annual Report. I'll call on Hamish Moore, independent chair of the Audit Committee, to introduce the report for information and discussion.
Lord Mayor, elected members, members of the Audit Committee, members of the public, senior officers and colleagues, thank you for the invitation to come and present the Audit Committee report for the last financial year. As Lord Mayor said, my name is Hamish Moore and I'm the independent chair of Audit. For those who don't know me or the actual committee, this is an independent appointment which forms part of the governance processes of the council. The purpose of my report today is to highlight to the council the work of the committee and the key risks that we see emerging for the next year or so. This is a short presentation, which I'm sure, given your agenda, you'll be pleased to receive. So the first point really is that the committee's role is to provide you with assurance that what is technically called the control environment is effective. By that, what we mean is that the way in which the council makes its decisions and controls that, and the way in which the council controls the way in which it spends its money, how risks are controlled and assessed and managed, and how these risks are reported, that is the focus of our work. So in a sense, it is part of the governance arrangements and one of the probably three most powerful parts for the council. So the continuing control risk areas for this year have firstly been, can you get a set of accounts signed off by the external auditor, and can you get a value-for-money statement signed off without qualification? And you might think that this is a technical matter. Be assured that it is more than that. Look at it the other way around. If you don't have a set of accounts that are signed off or you have qualification, it's indicative that you have a major problem in the governance of the organisation. I'm delighted to say once again that we are in the position of having those accounts signed off without any qualification. The second area we've been looking at is organisational transformation, and our challenge there is directly to the chief executive on a time-by-time basis. Our third area is looking at adult and children's care. The third, the fourth area is resilience planning, and the last area has been the commercial opportunities, in particular in relation to the council's property portfolio because that is a very significant asset, but it's also an extremely important revenue stream. The committee is involved in collaborative work with senior staff in the directorates and chief officer level to try and anticipate the demand and risks arising and see how these risks can be best addressed. And I'm pleased to report that this collaborative approach, but challenging approach, is working, and I think it would be fair to say it's largely well-received by officers. Your external auditors, Ernst and Young, EY, have again commented on the committee's approach as being leading edge and upper quartile, and more generally, they often refer other authorities to the committee as an exemplar, and we've had a number of visitors to the committee to see what we are trying to do. The council continues to receive the Clean Audit Report. It's not a rubber stamp, as I mentioned earlier, and the issue comes not only from a governance perspective, but also from a reputation and loss of confidence viewpoint. Finally, the council carries out a review process into the effectiveness of the Audit Committee itself. In other words, are we doing a reasonably good job? And I'm delighted to tell you that on a score, an average score out of five, almost on everything, we're scoring 4.5. So we're not perfect, but we're going in the right direction, and we're certainly better than the majority of other similar committees. Finally, can I thank all members of the committee, both independent members and elected members, for their support and contribution. The professionalism, particularly of Tony Kirkland's team, who are really fundamentally important in terms of the financial part of the exercise, and in particular, Joe Miller from Democratic Services. And this team together makes the work of the committee possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Hamish. Your number of you have indicated you want to comment on the report. I'll call on councillor Taylor, first of all, to be followed by councillor Chisholm.
Thank you. GDPR has become a major issue for everybody in recent years, and I just wondered what attention the Audit Committee has given to the issue of GDPR and potential corporate risk and liability arising to the council as a result of data breaches. And do you think the committee is satisfied that the information on these breaches by the council is being adequately reported, both to you and to all council?
Hamish, I believe there'll be a number of questions put out. Are you prepared?
Yes, yes, I'll take them all together. It's fine. Yep.
Councillor Chisholm.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I'd like to thank the chair of the Audit Committee for the report and to extend my thanks especially to the independent members of the committee for their public service and their expertise that we should be very grateful for. When I was appointed vice-chair of the committee at the beginning of this year, I did a bit of comparative study of audit committees, and I'm pleased to say that we're very lucky to have an audit committee that's very stable, absolutely leaves no stern unturned, is very skilled in what it does. So thank you very much. That really is an asset for the city. My question, though, is about the climate emergency. I'd like to the chair, perhaps for his views on how he thinks that the climate emergency will affect the work that the Audit Committee does over the next year.
Councillor Ferguson, followed by councillor Frew.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I'd like to echo councillor Chisholm's positive comments about the Audit Committee. An observation that I have is that the Audit Committee is focused on risks to the council, but I wonder if one of the pertinent risks to the Audit Committee itself is the crisis of confidence that we're seeing in the effective functioning of norms and standards in governance arrangements, high-profile failures of companies like Thomas Cook and Mothercare, and also the issues at Northampton County Council have called into question the effectiveness of governance arrangements. Now, I wonder if the chair would have any reflection... Now, I wonder if the Chair would have any reflections on how we're working to counter that at a local level. Thank you.
Councillor Law has left the chamber. Is there anyone else who wishes to contribute to the debate? No? No. Councillor Frew.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you, Hamish. As a member of the committee, I've been very impressed with your efficient and precise chairing of the meetings. So effective that I have recommended them to other members of this chamber to learn from. I don't think this has been taken up by the particular member. I do want to again enforce my suggestion of this and praise your chairing of the meetings and the effectiveness of the officers contributing to the committee. Now, the major sources of risk and uncertainty to the council are fairly obvious. Anyone on the street would be able to tell you about austerity, about Brexit. And I just want you to comment on the effectiveness of the committee looking elsewhere, trying to dig for the less obvious issues that come through the paperwork and are not seen in the headlines.
Hamish, over to you.
Four of them. Right, thank you. Well, first of all, thank you for your kind words. In my line of work, one's always worried when one gets accolades, as it usually followed by some bad news. However, I'll take that at face value and I'm very grateful for it. Thank you. All of those questions are really focused around risk issues. So if I may, I'll take the third one first, which is, how do you grapple with the issue of the crisis of confidence in both companies and in public sector bodies? For me, I think if you look at what happens that goes wrong sometimes, it's a failure to have relationships which are open, challenging, transparent, and where it's safe to actually ask difficult questions and safe to press, but without people feeling undermined. And if you look at all those examples that were given, often the challenge that was happening in the committees or the key decision-making routes were flawed. So I think the first thing is, yes, one needs to keep an eye on this. But I would encourage you to think more broadly. Are we doing that in the right way to encourage openness and transparency? I don't think you can dare in an audit committee ever become confident that you've got it cracked. But I think you can be confident that we are trying as hard as we possibly can be. In terms of the issues about GDPR, the committee has looked at this previously. And I spent some time with the chief internal auditor trying to address this issue. We think that broadly, you're well-positioned to tackle this. There have been data breaches. I think it's unreal, in a large organisation with thousands of people working for you, with hundreds of thousands or millions of bits of information, not to recognise that data breach is almost inevitable. It's about trying to put in processes and systems to limit that. And the council has done a lot to do with that. But it's simply not realistic, however good you are, because human error occurs, usually inadvertently. But there's been a big training programme. We've received assurance about that. I think it's good, but it's an ever-evolving thing. And cyber issues, as you will see in almost every organisation, however good you are, is a potential risk. But we look at it. In terms of the climate emergency issue, I think the challenge there is, if there is a role for the Audit Committee, it's in looking at whether the approach at the policy level, the risk assessment that's been undertaken there is balanced and all the relevant factors are being taken into account so that you don't inadvertently go down one route of trying to implement something on the climate emergency, but inadvertently create a problem somewhere else. So hearing earlier about the train problem, you know, if you don't fix the train problem, people will then take aeroplanes to get to London or wherever. So you have to kind of look at that. So I think from an audit committee point of view, we need to look at that when the relevant policy is available, about the balanced risk approach to that. And lastly, the less obvious issues. Well, there's lots of things that the committee looks at. Often, looks like a small issue that then grows into one. And one of the ones that we're looking at coming forward is the relationship between the level of absence and productivity in the council and the wellbeing of people. Because there's lots of evidence that these two are inextricably built together. And that is a less obvious risk for an audit committee to look at. But we want to be assured that the council has got this in its sights and is doing everything it possibly can in a proactive way to address the issue. I hope that deals with all the four questions, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Hamish. Does council agree to receive the report?
Agreed.
Thank you. We move on to item nine, which reports referred from Cabinet and Committees. The first one is the mid-year Treasury Management Review. I'll call on councillor McCarthy to move the report, seconded by councillor Dylan.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. The council will be aware that we're required by the Treasury Management Code of Practice to publish an update at this time of year. And I do hope that this report before us tonight, Lord Mayor, is non-controversial. The report that's before us has been through Cabinet. It provides us with an update on the various prudential indicators that were required to publish as part of that code that I've mentioned. Lord Mayor, a couple of specifics and then an area that I think we need to be aware of as well. So in the report, I think it's really clear, the current estimate of total capital expenditure is 126 million. Of course, that changes on a monthly basis, depending on the projections and how the schemes, the timing around schemes. Forty-four point seven million of total capital expenditure is estimated to be financed by borrowing. That's clearly set out in the report. And again, Lord Mayor, that will change on a monthly basis as schemes are developed. The current estimate on total borrowing is that it will reduce from over 742 million as of the end of last financial year to 696 million is what we're estimating by the end of March from this financial year. That's mainly due to short-term borrowing being repaid and not replaced. But we are using cash balances, Lord Mayor. I know we've reported on this before, given the low interest rates on any of our investments. As a result of not replacing our short-term borrowing, the profile of debt will change slightly this year. Longer-term debt will increase from just over eighty-three percent to over eighty-six percent. And of course, that is partly due to the availability until very recently of extremely cheap, long-term borrowing rates. Investment and cash balances have also reduced, Lord Mayor, down to fifty-one and a half million as of the end of August. And we're anticipating that will reduce by a further ten million before the end of the year. And our balances are set out in four point seven. Lord Mayor, we've updated the investment criteria. So all of your As and A stars are all there in your reports. And we have reviewed that to take a slightly more risk-averse position and reduced the length of time that we will borrow from a year to six months. And the issue, I think, Lord Mayor, that we will probably all have seen in the press, the Public Works Loan Board has recently, well, the government have recently taken the decision to increase all interest rates by one percent. So whilst that might help the government nationally, it's a way of, you know, it's a disincentive, I think, for borrowing. And I think, as a council, we'd be very, very concerned about the increase in costs in borrowing for capital investment. And I'm particularly thinking about housing investment, because that is the sort of route we would go for borrowing funds to help us invest in affordable homes in this city. We do, of course, have the uncertainty of Brexit. And we look forward to the outcome of the election that we're in the middle of. Lord Mayor, I'm happy to take questions, of course. And if there are any detailed issues of concern, I'm sure Mark Nicholson or Tony Kirkham will respond to them. Thank you.
Councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Formally second the recommendations to council set out in paragraph two point one and reserve the right to speak.
Okay, councillor Ferguson, you've indicated you want to comment on this report. Councillor Dunn, then?
No.
Okay. Does council agree the recommendations?
Agreed. Thank you.
We move on to item ten, which is the pay policy statement. Again, I'll call on councillor McCarthy to move the report, which will be seconded by councillor Jackie Robinson.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I'm really pleased to bring our pay policy statement that, again, has been through council processes at our recent meeting in October. Lord Mayor, I think we all in this council chamber are proud to invest in our staff. We think all of our staff have the right to have a good job. And it's one of the key values, I think, for us all, that underpins everything that we do. Lord Mayor, despite austerity, nine years of austerity, we are committed to ensuring there are good quality jobs in the city across all the sectors. And we have delivered on that ambition, I think, by demonstrating what can be done with your workforce through a fair procurement and a fair pay policy. We do, Lord Mayor, have a culturally diverse workforce with a range of talents and qualities. This helps us to understand the people we're serving from such a richly diverse city. And, Lord Mayor, our pay policy is not just about what goes into your pay packet at the end of the month. But we're proud to work with our trade union colleagues to make sure that additional benefits are provided. And we have excellent health-at-work policies. Things like childcare vouchers, workplace nursery schemes and cycle-to-work schemes are all supported by this council. Lord Mayor, I want to focus on two key issues that are contained within the report today. The first being on the gender pay gap. We are really proud to say we're really continuing to make excellent progress in narrowing the gender pay gap. Nationally, the average pay gap in 2018 was eight point six percent. Our figure is now three point six percent, less than half the national average. I think that's a really good outcome. We do remain committed to improving this figure. It is challenging in some parts of the workforce. And, you know, those traditional jobs, some of the areas are tricky. But we will continue to do everything that we can to address that. We've also made significant progress in appointing a number of women to senior roles within the council. And I think that makes a difference in the way that we work. And, Lord Mayor, one of the key things that we've addressed as an administration is working towards a real national living wage. Colleagues will know that we implemented the Newcastle Living Wage seven years ago. It was one of the first decisions we took when we took over the administration. We believed in that principle of providing a decent wage. So we did move away from that bare-bones minimum wage in 2010. And we've matched the foundation living wage eighteen months before the national pay scales caught up. So colleagues will probably know that the bottom salary on the council's pay scale equates with the foundation living wage rate of nine pounds an hour. And, Lord Mayor, colleagues will also know that's one pound thirty more than the statutory living wage that the government have introduced. I think that's good for our staff. Not only, Lord Mayor, is that the right thing to do, but it makes economic sense. We know that, we've all seen the report, of how that demonstrates significant investment in our local economy. And I think as a council, we're really proud to have delivered on that. Lord Mayor, I'm happy to answer questions, if there are any. And I'm proud to bring this report to us tonight.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I second the report and reserve the right to speak.
Councillor Morrissey, followed by councillor Higgins.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Looking back over pay statistics, it's very pleasing to see that our hard-working staff on the lowest pay scale have had a forty-two point nine percent growth increase in pay between 2013 and 2019, taking them from just over 12,000 to almost 17,500. It's also interesting to see that the chief executive's salary has had a 22.5 percent growth increase from 150,000 to almost 190,000. However, can council be informed as to why hard-working staff on the median salary scale have had an increase of 12.4 percent, which in real terms is a cut, as inflation has had a growth rate of 15.3 percent over this period? Once again, forcing the squeezed middle to bear the brunt of these pay changes. Will they see this as a fair pay policy?
Councillor Higgins, followed by councillor Cot.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. Maybe there is a link between my question and the previous one. Can I thank the Deputy Leader of Council for the pay policy statement that reflects the priority that we give to the interests of our hard-working staff and their commitment, particularly through the past 10 years of austerity? I am particularly pleased at our commitment to the Newcastle Living Wage and to removing barriers to employment for those in our most disadvantaged communities. In view of these positive steps taken, does the Deputy Leader of Council share my sense of disappointment at the negative media comments by certain members of the party opposite in relation to the salary of our chief executive and other senior managers, which are disrespectful to the important contribution that they make to the effective running of our city? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Cot, followed by councillor Avery.
Okay, thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And thank you, councillor McCarthy. I'm sure that we all in this chamber welcome the work that you're doing to secure the welfare of our staff. Our employees deliver services for us. And in the opposition, we are very grateful for all the work that they undertake. And I was particularly struck by what you also raised about the work on the gender pay gap, which I know is close to your heart and is very important. You actually mentioned also something about the living wage. That's something that we are supportive of as well. And you mentioned, of course, that it was nine pounds an hour. There's a lot of talk in the general election coming up about increases, substantial increases, in the statutory national minimum wage. And I wondered whether there was any thought about how that might affect the living wage, because obviously, there may be an issue there. Are you going to look at raising the threshold of that in some way? Well, I suppose it depends what the outcome is. But I'd be interested in your comments and whether there's anything that we, across the chamber, can work together on to ensure our staff maintain a good working wage for what they do for us.
Councillor Avery, followed by councillor Donnelly.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And I entirely agree with all of the comments that councillor Cot just made. But in respect of the comments made by councillor Morrissey, I would ask the Deputy Leader to comment on the results of national pay awards and of national funding levels to the council, and whether she agrees with me that that is the principal limiting factor of median wage growth has been unsatisfactory national pay awards and unsatisfactory national funding, and that it would be perhaps perverse to reduce staffing levels in order to increase median pay, as that would increase overwork, reduce services, and generally damage the ability of the council, as well as obviously costing loyal council staff their jobs.
Councillor Donnelly, followed by councillor Jackie Robinson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Two things are constant under this administration. Council tax rises and excessive inflation, and large rises in the pay of its chief executive. My residents feel the inequality between their chief executive's pay and the lower-paid staff must be reduced. In the last three years, the postholder's pay has increased by 21 percent, more than 12 times the current rate of inflation. When appointed, the chief executive's pay was 151,000. It's now 184,000, a rise of 32,000. During this period, most public sector workers will be lucky to have received 5 percent. Will the administration please justify its inconsistent and unfair pay policies? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Robinson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I pass it on to Joyce.
Okay, I'll call on councillor McCarthy to reply.
Lord Mayor, thank you very much for the opportunity to respond to those questions. Councillor Morrissey, and I think that's your first contribution in city council, so thank you for bringing some very important questions for us to consider. And actually councillor Avery answered the question in terms of the way that the pay has been agreed nationally through the national negotiations. They have primarily given more money to the lowest paid, which actually in this council chamber we would support. So that obviously does have an impact, but we are working indeed in very austere times. So it is quite challenging. Lord Mayor, in relation to the pay of our most senior staff, I think if you look at the data in the report that's before us, you can see that the pay proportions between the lowest paid in the city council and the highest paid is actually significantly better than if you looked at the same in the private sector. And actually, we do quite well in comparison to other public sector organisations in this region. I haven't got the figure in my head, but I think we are currently at something like 1 to 11. In the private sector, it's something like 1 to 246. So I think we do quite well in relation to that. And if you compare the highest salaries in our council with neighbouring local authorities, I think we do extremely well to maintain good relationships with our senior team and they stay with us because we're a really good employer. Councillor Higgins, absolutely. Very, very disappointed. It's very difficult for senior officers in any local authority business to react to comments that are made in the media. I don't think it's very helpful and it certainly isn't fair to make those kinds of comments. I absolutely agree with you. I am really proud of all that we do to remove barriers to employment. We are a good employer and we will continue to do so. Councillor Cot, absolutely. I think that's an interesting question if we end up with a Labour government in December, which of course I'm working very hard to achieve. I'm assuming that a Labour government would find us the resources to make sure we could pay for that because one of the key messages in our manifesto will be to end austerity, which of course you were partly too introducing. Not that we'll make political points today, but you did. Councillor Avery answered questions really around councillor Morrissey. Of course, the national pay awards, we must implement. You know, we are part of the negotiation of all of that and I think we will do our best to find the resources for that. I know that means that it's quite challenging when we're making cuts, but we do need to protect the salary rises of our staff team. And, Lord Mayor, councillor Donnelly talks about our inconsistent and unfair pay policies. He's quite simply wrong. I don't agree with him. Thank you.
Does council agree the recommendations? Agreed, right. If we could move on to item 11, which is the appointment of independent members. I'll call on councillor Jackie Robinson to move the report, seconded by councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The reason that we brought this report is to reappoint the independent members until May 2021. They have a considerable amount of knowledge and understanding of how Newcastle City Council works and their experience is invaluable. The current members have indicated they would be willing to stay. And I'll take any questions?
councillor Cot. Sorry, I beg your pardon.
Sorry, Lord Mayor, I was just going to second that report. Thank you.
councillor Cot. Are you speaking on behalf of councillor Law, who had indicated she was going to speak?
I am, yes.
Thank you.
That's okay. Yes, thank you very much. Right, okay. Yes, I think we very much welcome the contribution that's been made by the independent members. They certainly have played a very important role over the years. My question's really about the future and I'm interested to know, so obviously we've got continuity with the current members, but I'm interested to know what kind of succession planning there might be in place, you know, when the independent members decide to move on or what the council's policy might be on succession planning, looking at getting a new experience, new blur, a rotation of positions. I think this is quite a healthy opportunity to have a debate around that and I just wonder what plans would be in place to actually provide information to members of council about those kind of issues.
No one else? Okay. Call on councillor Robinson to reply.
Thank you for that, Nick. We do have other members, independent members that's willing to come on, so it will be a succession. So just to let you know. Thank you.
Okay, does council agree the recommendations? Agreed, thank you. Moving on, we've received five written questions this month. The replies have been circulated in the chamber. You have them before you. So moving on to cabinet member updates, the first one on transport and air quality. I'll call on councillor Ainsley to introduce the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm absolutely delighted to bring my third portfolio report to council. And I have to say, it's been an incredibly busy 12 months and while I won't go through the report in detail, as I'm sure everybody's read it, I'll pick out a few key achievements from over the last year as well as mentioning some of the plans that will help us improve air quality. Poor air quality is, as we all know, a national public health crisis linked to around 40,000 premature deaths each year in the UK, including an estimated 360 in Newcastle Gateshead and North Tyneside. And just to put that into some kind of context, there are an average of about 11 deaths as a result of road accidents, road traffic accidents on our roads per year as well. Everyone has a part to play in addressing this problem and councils are committed to doing whatever they can to protect the health of the people who live, work and visit the city. The way councils are having to respond, however, is being directed by central government and their legal direction, which requires us to achieve compliance in the shortest possible time. We are currently consulting on the final proposals to address this health emergency, but I'm pleased to say that over 60% of respondents in our initial consultation agreed that poor air quality is a problem that needs addressing. I'm confident that the revised proposals will be as effective in addressing poor air quality but will have a far less negative impact on the economy, which was a major concern highlighted by business during the first consultation. They have been broadly welcomed, the new proposals have been broadly welcomed by many businesses and business groups, including NE1. A key part of our proposals is to provide measures that will help businesses affected, including proposed delivery hubs outside of the charging zone and grants to upgrade vehicles to newer or electric models that would not be charged. We're continuing to talk to business so that we can ensure the right support and funding needed from government to provide this is put in place. We've been clear that our proposals at this stage do not include any charges for cars, but this may be something we need to consider in the future. Having said that, we're planning to introduce a range of measures, especially on the time bridge, that will affect car drivers and we expect help to shift some of those journeys currently taken by car onto public transport. With regard to the city centre, we still intend to permanently restrict access to vehicles on Blackett Street in the longer term in order to create a cleaner, safer and more pleasant space in the heart of the city's main shopping area. We're continuing to discuss this with bus operators, businesses and other premises in the nearby area to look at how this could work in terms of rerouting vehicles and changes to access and delivery arrangements. Working with partners, we will be submitting ambitious funding bids to the Transforming Cities Fund and the Clean Air Fund so that we can invest in better public transport. We've already heard from Tobin Hughes this evening about some of those proposed improvements and including developing bus lanes on key corridors. Key junctions have been upgraded on our city centre bus loop, including installing new traffic signals and improving the connection to the city's traffic management centre control room to help junctions work more efficiently. We have an eight million improvement scheme to upgrade our streetlights, cut carbon emissions and reduce light pollution. We're working with SSE Enterprise Contracting to replace the old sodium lights with new LED ones that give off whiter light for improved visibility. The scheme, which will see around 34,000 streetlights replaced across the city, will also result in annual savings of around £1.4 million throughout the use of the more energy efficient technology. The new LED lights are much more environmentally friendly than the older sodium lights and because the light is focused down to the ground rather than being emitted in all directions, they produce a lot less light pollution, as I've already said. We've recently entered into a new contract with a bush shelter provider and we will be seeing new bush shelters across the city. These bush shelters focus on providing quality digital advertising rather than the paper and paste that we have in a lot of areas at the moment. But they also provide clean, safe space for people to wait for the public transport and it's all part of, you know, trying to get that modal shift to encourage people to move from their cars to using public transport. I must say, none of this could have been achieved without the commitment, dedication and skills of the staff. I must place on record my thanks to them all. I know this portfolio often raises some very contentious issues, but we can't shy away from taking bold, ambitious decisions to ensure that our city continues to thrive as well as being clean, green and healthy. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Take any questions?
Thank you councillor Ainsley. If I could ask people to keep their contributions succinct, as a number of people have indicated they want to speak. Councillor Kane then, followed by councillor Higgins.
Okay, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Ainsley for your report. First question is, your report mentions the Barris Bridge scheme. How do you feel that reflects the transport hierarchy that the city has adopted? Secondly, given the air quality situation you talked about and the climate crisis and the climate emergency we've declared, does she feel it's time to completely rethink those schemes that went to consultation in the west of the city which seem to treat pedestrians and cyclists at the bottom end of the priority list rather than the top where they should be in the cycling hierarchy? And lastly, I know I've raised this issue before, but how will she be monitoring the impact of any changes to access to the central motorway and making sure that it doesn't divert traffic through residential areas and bringing the pollution closer to the people? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
councillor Higgins, followed by councillor Taylor.
It's not councillor Higgins. There we are. Yeah, can I just thank councillor Ainsley again for the very helpful report? She's actually spoiled one of my questions by the bit about bush. I was going to ask the bush shelter question, but a big thank you from the Benwell pensioners in relation to bush shelters and I think councillor Ainsley knows what I'm talking about there. So I'll just ask a question in relation to the latest air quality survey that's being undertaken. I think it goes on to the end of November. And one of the things that we were frustrated by previously was about the survey didn't reach the more disadvantaged parts of the community. We were tending to get response to the survey from car owners and people from more affluent areas. So can she comment on any progress that we've made to getting a feedback from disadvantaged communities who might not be car owners but would be significantly affected by any changes? Thank you.
councillor Taylor, followed by councillor Avery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We're obviously going to need a variety of strategies to tackle the air pollution in the city. So I'm wondering what discussions the council has had with Nottingham about their workplace parking levy, following the suggestion by the opposition that the council take up Nottingham's invitation to brief us on the plans and host a study visit.
councillor Avery, followed by councillor Ashby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. A couple of short questions, but I'll preface that by saying that the proposed schemes for the potential changes to the outer west, particularly along Stamford Road, in particular affecting my ward, includes one part in the proposed scheme for Pulley Road, the Pulley Road junction importantly with Binsford Avenue, which would include a pedestrian crossing. And while other members might wish there to be reevaluations of other parts of the scheme, that pedestrian crossing would make an enormous impact to my residents now and I'd ask that that part be expedited because it provides a clear benefit to pedestrians in the ward, particularly involving children and it's really critical. And it's been a long-term priority, not just of myself, my colleagues, my predecessors and indeed I think some predecessors from opposite parties who have been members for Blakelaw. My question is about bus lanes. I think Tobin really importantly brought this through, that bus users are a really significant part of all public transport users and are frequently forgotten about, particularly in comparison to car users. And if she could give us more detail on proposals for the bus loop and how we can extend out some of the fantastic bus lane corridors, which are incredibly effective. As a frequent user of the bus lane corridor going out to Cowgate, it gives you a really phenomenal speed of journey into town that really makes it an incredibly attractive option for residents and is the carrot that you need to get people out of cars in combination with the stick.
councillor Ashby, followed by councillor Fairley.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Ainsley will be as aware as I and my colleagues from the frequent and frequently detailed communications from residents about their high levels of concern about the management of projects on Killingworth Road and Great North Road and the long delays that have occurred in their completions. Would she therefore support reference to the scrutiny committee to undertake evidence gathering on the subject? This could include exploration of reasons for delays, established cost overruns and how they will be paid for, the cost to road vehicle users of traffic delays and the impact on air quality of emissions from vehicles standing in jams caused by lane loss and the modelling of the increase in cycle use expected upon their completion.
councillor Fairley, followed by councillor Ave.
Yes, thanks for the report. You've already mentioned in some depth about LED streetlights, which is what I wanted to ask and you've mentioned the cost savings and some of the environmental benefits from reduction in light pollution. But do you have any figures about the reduction in the electricity consumption as LEDs are much more efficient and the consequent reduction in CO2 emissions and the impact on climate change? Thank you.
councillor Ave, followed by councillor Penny Evans.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. West End of Newcastle is one of the most vibrant and diverse parts of our city. But it is a shame that residents keep missing out on improvements that we see in other parts of Newcastle. For example, recently we've had the announcement regarding closure of Fenham Pool. Moving forward, can the cabinet member please tell us what plans the city council has to meet the public transport needs of residents in the West End? And can she comment on any discussions that she's had with Nexus regarding metro expansion into the West End, please?
councillor Penny Evans.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd just like to ask councillor Ainsley how we can ensure that residents are able to use their democratic right in the forthcoming general election in terms of getting to Pollan Station safely. So really, what preparations are being made for the safety of our residents in relation to our roads and pavements given the forecast of hard winter?
councillor Cot.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. You may remember councillor Ainsley, at scrutiny, I raised a point about air quality monitoring and I was told that Newcastle is one of the most monitored cities in the country. Could you explain then where residents and others may receive information about all of that? Is it pooled and collected centrally? And what partnership arrangements are in place to actually deliver the monitoring in the future? Thank you.
Councillor Donnelly.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just a quick point in relation to the new streetlights. My residents have been raising a number of reservations simply because initially we were lighting above the standard, which was a hundred and fifty watt. We then moved to a hundred watt, and now in some places in residential streets, it's only thirty-seven watt. So it's a massive difference from what residents had before. And whilst, yes, there's savings to be made with regards to the energy, it would be maybe better if we went like for like with the LED replacement of the traditional filament bulb. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, no one else has indicated they want to contribute, so I'll invite councillor Ainsley to reply to those points. If you can, invite you, if you can't, to send an email round.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've certainly tried to take notes of all the questions that have been asked, but if I miss anyone, please email me and I will get back to you. I will respond, just in case I miss anyone. Councillor Kane asked me about Barris Bridge and the transport hierarchy, as well as the West End improvements, which I think councillor Avery's actually addressed some of the issues there, and access to the central motorway. Of course, we're monitoring the changes and, you know, as a result of the consultation that's been undertaken at the minute, we'll continue to monitor access to the central motorway. Barris Bridge, and I know you've said this before to me, Gareth, about the transport hierarchy. And I think Barris Bridge, you know, we've listened to people who said that the distance across the road, the timing of the lights and so on, wasn't right. And that's, those are the changes that are being undertaken at the moment. So I think we are looking at the transport hierarchy with regards to Barris Bridge. Councillor Higgins, I guess I'm sure the pensioners will be delighted with the bus shelter. With regard to the air quality survey reaching disadvantaged groups, there was concern during the initial survey that, you know, most of the people were male, or the majority of respondents were male, aged between thirty-five and fifty-five. And, you know, we've made a great, our sort of communications team made a great effort at contacting other people. We've done work with young people. And, you know, we are trying to reach those disadvantaged groups by having the hard copies of the survey in libraries and in the public spaces. Councillor Taylor's question about the workplace parking levy in Nottingham. I think we need to be, we're not exactly comparing like with like. And workplace parking levy is something that we've considered. But I think you have to remember that Nottingham, A, they own eighty percent of their transport provision, their public transport network across their city, and they have twenty-five thousand paid parking spa, workplace parking spaces across the city. That's as opposed to us who have very little control about our public transport. So we couldn't reinvest any money that we have, that we raise from a workplace parking levy back into public transport, or it'd be very difficult. And we only have ten thousand spaces. I know ten thousand's a lot, but it's nowhere near the twenty-five thousand places that Nottingham has. I communicated actually with councillor Stone a little while ago when he suggested that we visit Nottingham. And we suggested that we ask Nottingham to come up to maybe present to a group of councillors here rather than us all troubling down there. And I will take that up with officers to see where we are with that. Councillor Avery, about the bus lanes and the bus loop. And of course, part of our drive to get people, sorry, that was a bit of pun, wasn't it? It's not part of the drive. Part of what we're doing to encourage people to leave their cars at home is of course making our public transport network much more efficient. And as you rightly say, bus lanes really, really help that with that efficiency. I know that the bus lane that you're, you know, going up towards Cowgate has made real difference to the journey times there. And we're continually working with public transport, the bus companies, to work on the bus loop to go round the city and introducing measures, including improved traffic signals, to make sure that those journey times are as efficient. Councillor Ashby, I think there's been lots of questions answered via the written format tonight on Killingworth Road. But certainly, if I haven't, if those answers haven't addressed all of your concerns, please, please get in touch with me because we are continually monitoring the issues there. The impact, councillor Fairley, that streetlights have on the emissions, and I did some work on this because this is obviously something that's really important in, you know, the climate emergency. But we are reducing our emissions. I don't have the exact figures currently, but we will probably save under, a little under six thousand tonnes of carbon once all of the streetlights are installed. That's an annual projection. And of course, we'll monitor that and I can bring you updated figures as and when the programme of that is rolled out. Councillor Ave, about the West End missing out. I mean, we've heard from Tobin Hughes this evening about some of the difficulties in extending the metro and that system out into the West End. But of course, you know, we're a very inclusive city and want the whole of the city to benefit from an improved public transport system. And we continually lobby government and apply for whatever funding bids we can to make that happen. But it is in private ownership and when we need to continually work towards getting more public control of that. Councillor Penny Evans, the winter maintenance. You know, we've got two grid stores across the city. We're looking to keep the city moving regardless of what the weather has to throw at us. I think you made reference to people getting to polling stations, given we've got a winter election coming up. I'd urge them to get a postal vote. Councillor Cot, the air quality monitoring. I think, as you know, we work very closely with the Urban Observatory. And I know various residence groups and indeed schools have acquired equipment from the Urban Observatory to monitor air quality in their areas. And residents accessing data, you know, I mean, if they emailed me, I'm not quite sure if I can find you the link to get directly to the Urban Observatory, but certainly if they emailed me, I can make sure that that is passed on. And councillor Donnelly, I'm really, really sorry and surprised to hear that you feel that the new streetlight programme is having a reduction in the light capacity because certainly, all the evidence, and, you know, I have been out and about in the West End of the city where the programme started, and certainly I've heard very positive responses. But I will check out the figures you've given me and get back to you on that. And I think, Lord Mayor, that has answered all of the questions.
Yes, I think that's good everybody. So does councillor agree to receive the report? Thank you. We move on to the update on health and social care. I'll call on councillor Kilgower to introduce the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I start, as always, by thanking officers for their help in pulling together this annual report? A report like this can't mention every aspect of work that a portfolio covers, especially one as diverse as this. So I'd like to take this opportunity to pay tribute to every member of staff who contributes to the delivery of these vital but often unseen and unsung services. I'd like to thank Ewan Weir particularly for his hard work, dedication and leadership during a period of significant change, and also for the support, guidance and kindness that he's shown me personally in my role as cabinet member. Thank you, Ewan. I wish you the very best of luck in your next venture. Thanks also to Health Scrutiny Committee for an interesting discussion when I presented this report to them last month. Scrutiny has an important role in our governance structure and I value their contribution and challenge. And finally, thank you to councillors Felicity Mendelson and Simon Barnes for their hard work and support as mental health champion and champion for tackling loneliness respectively. Lord Mayor, there's no way, there's no new way to say this, and I'm repeating what I've said when I've presented the last four annual reports, but it's a message that's worth repeating. This annual report, and adult social care generally, must be seen in context, a context of increasing demand and cost pressures alongside cruel cuts forced on us by central government, who, when faced with a national crisis in social care, offer small-scale, short-term fixes of one-off monies or pass the financial burden to local councils and communities who can at least afford it through the social care precept, none of which in any way mitigates the cuts they've made to council budgets. Health and social care services are facing an unprecedented financial challenge, and yet the Conservative government has again squandered the opportunity to find a lasting and fair funding solution by again delaying the long-promised, somewhat mythical, green paper. Given this challenging context, it is remarkable then that we've achieved so much since I presented my last report. Satisfaction rates with support or services received remain high, both as service users and carers. Ninety percent of service users tell us that the services they receive make them feel safe, an actual increase of five percent on the last survey return. Almost ten thousand requests for support from people who had no previous contact with adult social care were received and assessed, and over five thousand one hundred people received ongoing support, while a further one thousand nine hundred and seventy people received short-term reability support to help them regain their independence. Our delayed transfers of care figures remain very low, proof, I think, that we've used temporary funds such as the BCF and the IBCF wisely, piloting new services and ways of working and delivering more effective ways of working across the health and social care sector, improving outcomes for service users, reducing pressures on the NHS and stabilising the care market. We've made great progress on delivering our manifesto commitments, particularly around dementia-friendly Newcastle and making Newcastle a heart-start city. We're working with colleagues at Newcastle University around accessible toilets and adult changing facilities because we know that a barrier to many individuals and families being able to enjoy the city centre and other shopping, sports and cultural venues is not being able to actually access that sort of facility. I'm confident we're in a position to now make real progress with our commitment to tackle loneliness and a real scourge of our time. The MASH, the multi-agency safeguarding hub for adults, has been successfully established, and officers based in our tackling sexual exploitation hub, recognised as a national exemplar, continue to work with partners both internal and external to the council to support victims of sexual exploitation and modern-day slavery. This is vital work that presents a significant financial challenge to us, but it's a challenge we're determined to meet. We continue to meet our commitment to support those displaced by conflict in Syria and elsewhere in the world. Our ambitious care and support new bill programme continues at pace with provision at Allendale Court already producing some amazing success stories. And I'm delighted that Connery House opened on schedule just a week or so ago, and I wish them every success. I had hoped that the annual report for the Armed Forces Forum, which I chair as the council's Armed Forces Champion, would be attached to this report as an appendix. That hasn't been possible, but I will circulate it by email if that's acceptable to members. Lord Mayor, I hope I've been able to give council a flavour of both the challenges and successes of the last few months, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, councillor Kilgower. Councillor Taylor, followed by councillor Mendelson.
Thank you, councillor Kilgower. I've got a couple of questions. I'm very pleased about the focus on loneliness, and particularly because if you look at the carers and social care user survey, we've only got forty-nine percent of service users that feel they've got enough social contact and only forty-four percent of carers, so it's obviously a big issue. So I wondered if you could say a bit more about what actions the council has taken already and what's planned for the future in tackling loneliness? And my second question is, I do very much welcome the proposal for a health and wellbeing hub, and I was just wondering if you could say something about the timetable for this?
Councillor Mendelson, followed by councillor Ave.
Yes, in Jesmond, moving towards dementia-friendly Jesmond, we found that awareness about dementia not only helps to break down the stigma, but it also helps provide information and support by a whole variety of organisations for people affected by dementia. I wonder if you could say a little bit more about what will happen about awareness across Newcastle as part of a dementia-friendly Newcastle initiative?
Councillor Ave, followed by councillor Barnes.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I would like to thank and congratulate the cabinet member on the excellent work she's done on making Newcastle a dementia-friendly city. It is extremely important that Newcastle continues to be the champion in tackling mental health issues, as she said. We have many housing developments in north of the city, places in my ward, such as Hazelwick, Great Park, Kingston Park and Dennington. Can the cabinet member please give us an update on how primary health care needs of these residents are going to be met? More specifically, I'm referring to access to GP and pharmacy services in those areas. Thank you.
Councillor Barnes, followed by councillor Schofield.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, councillor Kilgower. Earlier this year, a Panorama programme raised serious concerns about Walton Hall, an NHS-commissioned independent hospital in which two Newcastle residents were living. I was just wondering if you could please tell us what actions have been taken as a result of this investigation? Thank you.
Councillor Schofield, followed by councillor Holland.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, councillor Kilgower, for this very comprehensive report. My question concerns Operation Sanctuary. But first, I'd like to second your congratulations to Newcastle becoming a national example of good practice in response to the horrendous crimes of sexual violence and abuse of vulnerable girls and young women by groups of men in the West End of Newcastle. This national recognition is, as you say, a tribute to council staff in partnership with the police and agencies in the community and voluntary sector. Ninety offenders were brought to justice and the much-needed compassionate support was given to their victims. We know, though, it doesn't stop there. It's great the issue has been widened to cover all exploitation of vulnerable people and that the Safeguarding Board is addressing the issue to include human trafficking. Can you say how the council, with its partners, will be proactive in putting in place measures to prevent this horrendous crime happening again? Thank you.
Councillor Holland, followed by councillor Ali.
Thank you for your report. Your report worryingly mentions that in the first three months of operation, the multi-agency safeguarding hub responded to one thousand eight hundred and three safeguarded adult concerns. Is this something that we should be really concerned about? Thank you.
Councillor Ali, followed by councillor Beecham.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for your report, councillor Kilgower. You mentioned in your report that delayed transfers of care attributable to social care is naught point one day per hundred thousand population. Could you tell us how we have achieved this figure? Thank you.
Councillor Beecham, followed by councillor Avery.
My Lord Mayor, it's not often in my forty-five years as a member of the council that I've spoken from the far left of the chamber. But I would just like to, while commending the report, just ask you a couple of questions, which are not answered actually in the report, I think helpful to know and to be included in future ones. For example, how many people are receiving home help in the city and at what cost? And in particular, how much has been generated through the welfare rights service for people in the city? I seem to have a figure of nine million pounds a year in mind, but that may not be right. But I think that sort of information would help to fill out the very good work already covered in the report and will be of interest to people in the city.
Councillor Avery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Kilgower, for a fantastic report. You do a fantastic job in a really challenging set of circumstances, as do so many of our staff who are frequently forgotten about. And I say that both as someone who's the child of someone who's a service user and someone who is also a disabled person. I don't know whether I need to declare an interest as an autistic person, but my question is about autism. Councillor Barnes alluded to some of the really troubling allegations that have come out, both in relation to that hospital and more recently in other inquiry reports. And I was wondering if you could say slightly more about how we deal and implement our proposals to be an autism-friendly city that we've made out in the manifesto, both for people with more severe and challenging forms of autism, where we really need to work hard to keep them out of hospitals where these sorts of negative situations can exist, but also those who might be living more comfortably in the community through things like the Autistic Arts Festival, and whether we have more proposals to help autistic older people who are frequently unusually likely to suffer mental health problems, unusually likely to be lonely and unusually likely to be out of work.
Thank you for that. No one else has indicated they want to... No one else has indicated they want to contribute, so I'll ask councillor Kilgour to reply. And again, if she can't answer everything, if you please email all members with a circular. Thank you.
Took the words out of my mouth, Lord Mayor. Thank you. councillor Taylor asked about loneliness, particularly and the survey results. I think we're in a position now to start to look at how we tackle loneliness from a local authority perspective. You'll remember our former colleague councillor Dan Greenoff was our tackling loneliness champion. Obviously, it's taken a little while because he stood down for our new champion to get up to speed with the work we're doing. It's quite a nebulous concept, I suppose, in some ways, but I think we're at a stage now where we can start to look at the work we're doing. The LGA guide is very useful, so we're starting with that as a starting point to just have a sort of a checklist to see what we're doing as part of that guide and what we need to do if there are gaps there. For the survey results, I agree, it's a worrying statistic. It's a statistic that's, I don't think it's changed significantly over the last few years, but that doesn't mean to say that we're not concerned about it and we are monitoring it. I think we accept that social isolation is an issue for the city as a whole and not just the council, and I have no doubt that a lot of the isolation that people are experiencing is a result of ongoing austerity and its impact. Really, we're trying to address it by working in different ways and by introducing initiatives of things like the dementia-friendly city work, things like the autism awareness work that we're intending to carry out. So I think it's not just our problem, it's something that we need to work with partners about to look to see how we alleviate it, because clearly it can affect absolutely anybody at any point in their life, and we need to be mindful of that and think about how we're going to start to tackle it with partners. You also asked, I think, about the health and wellbeing hub. We've got a number of different hubs across the city. We do have a lot of hubs, don't we? Our hub in the Granger Market is underway, and it's absolutely fantastic. We've got other work, health and wellbeing work, being carried out, which is my colleague councillor Stevenson's portfolio area around Fenham Library. That work's already being undertaken and is up and running, and as far as I'm aware is very, very successful. If there's a specific hub that you're referring to, if you can let me email me and I'll get the information to you. Sorry? Sorry. Okay, well, the Granger Market hub is... Sorry, I can't. Oh, sorry. No, we haven't got work on that site yet. We are working with, sorry, sorry, no, we're working with partners to try and engage more. We know there's a lot of work happening around dementia, with particularly the university and the NHS. We're hoping to work more collaboratively with them around the work that's happening at the old General Hospital site and around the Aging and Vitality Centre. Sorry, sorry for that confusion. councillor Avery, thank you for your comments. That was very kind. The development for GP surgeries and pharmacies around the new housing developments, I think, is a planning matter, so I will take that back to planning colleagues and I will try and get an answer to you, and I'll email you that answer. councillor Mendelssohn asked about dementia-friendly city work, and again, I suppose we've touched on that slightly. It's something I am genuinely really very proud of, the work that we've done around making Newcastle dementia-friendly. We're trying to build on the work that we've done over the past couple of years. We're focusing on a few different elements. We'll continue to train council officers in dementia awareness and work to make our buildings and services dementia-friendly. I accept that there's still work to do there. We're working with our VCS and public sector partners to maximise the use of the unit in the Granger Market, and we've run dementia-friendly sessions there. For example, Northumbria Police launched the Hub Protocol there a few months ago, and our health partners and the universities are keen to support the work there and use the space too. We're also investigating the potential to have activities running regularly there, not least to allow carers to have a short break, do some shopping, go for a cup, have a chat with other carers, whatever they happen to need to do. And the third strand is to support neighbourhoods and communities outside of the city centre to become dementia-friendly, very much building on the Jasmine model. Certainly, I know my ward colleagues and I hope to support a similar initiative in West Fenham, and I'm sure the Benwell and Scotswood councillors wouldn't forgive me if I neglected to mention the work Scotswood Community Garden and Search are jointly undertaking. Thank you, Rob. We've recently recruited into two time-limited posts to support the work that's being done, the being well and dementia-friendly work, and of course, there's also some overlap with other commitments around accessible toilets and the tackling loneliness work that councillor Barnes is undertaking. councillor Avery asked about autism awareness. I think there are two parts to this, really. I think it replicates a conversation we had very recently, I think, where somebody has a high degree of need, we're more likely to be aware of them, they're more likely to be in the system, and we're more likely to be able to help them, certainly with things like some of our new care models, where we've built new supported housing specifically for people with disabilities and/or autism, the likes of Allendale Court, for example, where we're looking to meet those individuals' needs. We're trying to help people with high-end needs be able to play a part that we know they want to in their own local communities, so I think they're possibly more visible to adult social care. I know one of the issues we discussed more recently was around people who perhaps are not, who have covered their autism while they've learnt coping mechanisms, who aren't known to social care particularly, and how we help support those people. And I think that's what the autism awareness work is, what we're looking to do to try and support particularly those people. It's a new commitment, and the intention is to work with the existing autism-friendly Newcastle group and build on the work that's happening in the city. So we know the likes of Twisting Ducks Theatre Company, for example, do some great work, and Newcastle Building Society has done awareness-raising work with its staff. Again, we'd like to try and replicate that elsewhere. We perhaps need to look at, do we have a role in how we coordinate and publicise that kind of work? Ultimately, I'd like to use the dementia-friendly city model as a template, so how we look to support staff who care for someone on the autism spectrum or who maybe have a diagnosis themselves, audit what training and awareness raising's available for our staff, particularly frontline staff, and see how we can either widen the take-up or fill any gaps in the training available. And then running alongside that, start having conversations with partners about how we make the city autism-friendly. I think especially there's a conversation to be had around public transport, because I know that's a concern that's raised regularly. I think we all acknowledge that small changes can make a big difference, and I think there's a real willingness across the board to try and improve people's experience in our city. councillor Barnes asked about Walton Hall. This was an extremely distressing report, and while this was a private hospital commissioned by our NHS partners, our officers have worked with two Newcastle residents and their families, NHS best partners and counterparts in Durham, to try and achieve the best possible outcomes for those two residents of Newcastle who had been placed there. Our two residents were immediately placed in new services appropriate to their needs and have both been receiving multidisciplinary support to help them deal with the trauma resulting from their time in Walton Hall. We're working with health partners to support our residents to move towards more independent community-based placements in the future, and council officers are working with Skills for People to use Quality Checkers, who are experts by experience, to supplement our own existing quality monitoring processes with a view to regional rollout of if this proves to be successful. Our quality monitoring processes have been reviewed by Skills for People to ensure they are aligned with the latest Keys to Citizenship framework, and regionally recommendations are currently being implemented, including using an enhanced check scheme for independent hospitals, improving information sharing and ensuring that service users, and I think this is vital, service users, their families and carers understand their rights and have a say in both service design and quality assurance. Service commissioners are meeting regularly to identify and address concerns at the earliest possible stage, and I think I can safely say I can assure council that every possible step is being taken and support given to health partners to prevent such dreadful abuse happening again. councillor Ali asked about our delayed transfer of cares figures. I think we achieved that through a variety of means. We've ensured that the temporary monies that we have have been spent testing new ways of working, such as the Time to Think Flats and the Nighttime Service, and we've invested in new supported housing models. We've maintained our excellent re-ablement service and have developed excellent working relationships with our health partners, all of which means we're able to put the right support in place at the right time, helping our residents to leave hospital with the wraparound services that they need, all of which contribute to amazingly low delayed transfers of care figures, and I think officers can be very, very proud of that. councillor Mayne's asked about safeguarding concerns. I think that's a good question. I don't think we have to be overly concerned, although we do need to remain vigilant and continue to monitor trends. I think the numbers are high, partly because people and agencies are more aware of safeguarding now, which can only be a good thing, I think. The CARE Act widened the definition, so we now receive safeguarding alerts for things like self-neglect, which weren't covered a few years ago. And what officers are finding is that the majority of referrals relate to welfare requests, and I think it's less than half are what officers would call kind of genuine safeguarding alerts, but I'd have to check the exact figures. That's certainly not to minimise the increasing numbers of people with safeguarding and the increased workload and capacity issues it brings with it. Hopefully, by co-locating different services together at the MASH, we'll start to see a different understanding, start to filter through our partner agencies and some of the welfare referrals dealt with by different routes. But I can reassure council that officers monitor the alerts very carefully, and we continue to work with partners to achieve the best outcomes possible for people. councillor Schofield asked about the sexual exploitation hub, sorry, and what we're doing to stop it happening again. I think, as you rightly point out, we have some very skilled and very able staff working at our sexual exploitation hub, both local authority officers and officers from our partner agencies and the police and the community and voluntary sector. We are keen to allow those staff to go and talk, which they do, to conferences, to other agencies, to other local authorities, to share their expertise and share the learning. It's really important that we share the learning from Operation Sanctuary. We have implemented the recommendations of the Joint Series Case Review, and a final report is due to go to both the safeguarding boards later this month, I think, so hopefully we'll be able to have a wider discussion about that at the next Health Scrutiny Committee.
Can I ask you to complete the reply by email, please?
Yes, certainly.
To try and get one or two items through.
Okay, sorry, I'm lost on the agenda. Okay, well, if I can just sum up in that case, Lord Mayor, as council knows, adult social care nationally is at breaking point. It's underfunded and neglected by central government, and despite this, we have so much to be proud of in Newcastle, thanks largely to a dedicated staff team. There are challenges ahead, obviously, but I look forward to a new Labour government committed to properly funding adult social care and moving towards parity, both of funding and delivery with the NHS, and I commend the report to councillor, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Does council agree to receive the report? Is that seconded? councillor Taylor, is agreed? No? Will you please vote then on that proposal? The proposal is that standing orders be suspended to finish business. We move on to item fifteen. Are the appointments agreed as set out on page nine of the supplementary? Yeah, can we note that councillor Taylor's vote needs to be recorded manually? councillor Woodock? Right. If we can then quickly move on to the notice of motion, I'll call councillor Kane to move the motion to be seconded by councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is a very short motion. I believe it's the shortest motion that's come to council in my time in the council. A record it will hold until the next agenda item, but it's a very important motion and one very close to my heart, because when I was first elected in 2004 was when the Lib Dems took control of the council and we brought in a zero-waste policy. That pushed up the recycling rate in the city from less than eight per cent up to forty-three per cent, taking us from the relegation zone of the National League tables right to the top half of the table. So it was a very successful policy, really focused minds. Since 2011, when the policy evaporated, then our recycling rates started drifting downwards, and noticeably, the council has been relying on energy recovery much more than recycling than was the case before, so it's quite a regressive step. Then we had the Waste Commission. As I pointed out last month, none of the Waste Commission's recommended targets have been adopted into the council's waste strategy, and I think this is really a big mistake. A waste strategy, as it stands, only quotes national targets, and, you know, from my point of view, and I'm sure most of us in this council, that is simply not good enough. So this motion is an attempt to fix that omission by bringing in a zero-waste policy by 2030 for the entire city, including the council itself, and I do hope the council will vote for the motion unamended. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Is that motion seconded? That's right. Right, I'll now call councillor Kemp to move an amendment, which will be seconded by councillor Kilgour.
Well, no surprise councillor Kane, with the pious bleatings that you express and do repeatedly. City council and this Labour administration acknowledges the fundamental issues of addressing waste as part of our environmental and climate change challenge. As Anne Hidalgo, the mayor of Paris, says, to deliver on the highest ambitions of the Paris Agreement requires urgent transformations of every aspect of modern life, including our consideration about what we throw away. That is why Newcastle City Council reviewed our council waste strategy agreed by this chamber only in March, a strategy which commits to taking ambitious, wide-ranging and inclusive actions to reduce municipal solid waste generation and improve materials management in the city, both key to making our city cleaner, healthier, more resilient and inclusive. Better waste management can also create jobs and economic opportunities for social entrepreneurs and vulnerable communities. We want to create a circular economy where virtually everything is reused and repurposed in some way instead of being thrown out. This means changing how we consume, but also how industries, especially food, textile and construction, produce their goods. We produce 141,000 tonnes of waste with over eight million collections a year to 132,500 homes, and as a growing city, this is set to increase further. Taking a transformational approach to waste management is and will continue to be critical to ensure the city operates within sustainable environmental and financial limits. We need to procure a range of new contracts. Our main waste contract is planned for renewal in 2025. This could be in place for a period of 25 years, so offers are working extremely hard to secure the very best solution. We recognise that new measures and targets will need to be developed as future approaches to waste and legislation changes, and we will do this. Part of delivering the Waste Action Plan will include the development of new measures and targets and an assessment of whether current published measures... and an assessment of whether current published measures, which are largely weight-based form and national indicators, represent the best way to measure performance. Our strategy is ambitious in its aims, setting out the significant progress already underway through numerous initiatives, such as the Food Waste Partnership, the Plastics Group and the Anti-Litter Campaign, and also Your City, Your Home, all following on from the groundbreaking initiative of the Waste Commission. We will review the waste strategy regularly to make sure that our ambitions and outcomes remain appropriate and to change them if necessary. This will, in line with government guidance, happen at least every five years, meaning that an initial review will happen by 2024 at the latest. This will be particularly important in light of any changes to the landscape in which we find ourselves, including the National Resource and Waste Strategy, which includes proposals that may come into force in 2023, the UK's potential departure from the European Union and any changes in UK waste legislation and policies which arise from that, and the level of funding, if any, provided to each local authority by the UK government. So therefore, I reject the motion and suggest that what our commitment is, is to achieve zero waste to food to landfill at the soonest possible time, which is more ambitious than setting a single arbitrary dateline. There is nothing to say that we do want, wish to achieve anything earlier. We set all of our ambition, energies and actions about achieving that result of zero waste to landfill, but setting an arbitrary milestone seems to me meaningless. So I urge council to reject the motion and accept the amendment.
Thank you. Is that amendment seconded? Right, the guillotine has actually fallen. So I will allow one further speaker, plus anyone who has reserved the right to speak. So councillor Falca.
I'd just like to take the opportunity to say that having a date by which you intend to achieve this by is not arbitrary and meaningless. It's something to aim for, and by removing it, all you're doing is giving yourself an excuse not to succeed.
Councillor Taylor, you have reserved the right to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm of course delighted that the Labour group have at last come round to our view that the council needs to have the aim of zero waste to landfill, which seem to have been abandoned in recent years. However, when I look at what the council has done since 2011 and what their plans are over the next few years, I don't have any confidence in the likelihood of even reaching the 2020 targets. The new waste strategy passed in March this year had a number of aims. Let's just look at some of them. To change the way people, businesses and organisations think about waste, we will develop and implement a number of behaviour change programmes and initiatives that will enable residents to change their behaviour to reduce, reuse and recycle their waste and repair items for the long-term benefit for the whole community. Why on earth are these not already in place? Ten years ago, the council was making great strides on waste minimisation and public awareness, thanks to the work of the Environmental Engagement, Education and Enforcement Team. This small team had the aim of improving behaviour and attitudes in respect to environmental and sustainability issues and worked with a number of external partners, formally and informally, including both universities, Newcastle College, the city's schools and residence groups, and there was also a waste minimisation team. On behaviour change, we had a successful Zero Waste Challenge and a Zero Waste Week was part of our environmental awareness programme, when residents were encouraged to reduce, reuse and recycle. A Given Take Day was held with the aim of promoting local reuse of items. We took part in Recycle Now Week and European Waste Reduction Week. And whilst these are not the, the complete answer, I do believe that regular events like this every few months are needed to encourage residents both to manage their waste and be involved in the whole strategy. The, the strategy in March are called to build communities where excess waste and litter are socially unacceptable. Well, I'm sorry, but how will that work when we see litter left lying across the city, bins left overflowing and waste dumped? It just doesn't encourage residents to improve their efforts on waste if their local area isn't clean and tidy. And we apparently also aim to maximise the quality and quantity of reuse and recycling. The Newcastle Climate Change Strategy in 2010 had ambitious targets to reduce domestic waste by fifteen per cent and increase domestic waste recycling to fifty-five per cent by 2020. What's happened? Well, actually, domestic recycling hasn't changed for seven years. It's still, still stuck around thirty-nine per cent. So how can we really have any confidence in reducing the 2020 target, let alone the 2030 target waste strategy proposed of sixty per cent? Actually, that's only five per cent extra from what we proposed for 2020. What we need is clear and measurable short and long-term targets to make sure there is a realistic and achievable plan to reach zero waste to landfill by 2030, not just a vague suggestion that we'll get there as soon as possible. Please support the original motion.
Right, I'll call on councillor Kane to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Sorry, I was expecting one more contribution from the other side. I think councillor Falca summed this up quite rightly. A target has to have a deadline, something to work to. Yes, there is a lot of short-term uncertainty in the world at the minute. But there's always uncertainty and not setting a date will be a very, I, I think, a very regrettable move. However, I, I am pleased that the, the administration has acknowledged that we do need local targets. We do have to raise our sights above the national targets, because, you know, those, that's really just the, the lowest common denominator, pushing up the lowest common denominator rather than moving us forward. And I know from my professional career, as well as my experience in council, how powerful a zero target can be. We saw the transformation between 2004 and 2011 in our whole attitude to waste. And I would urge council again to stick with the, the original motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, the motion has been amended. So is the amendment agreed? All right, so can you please pick up your devices of whatever sort and vote on the amendment? Is the amendment agreed? Finished, everyone? Councillor Apostol's wait at the back, problem? Yeah, well, we'll, we'll note your vote by hand. And by councillor Higgins, anybody else? Right, well, the amendment is clearly carried, so the amendment becomes the substantive motion. So is the motion agreed? Agreed, right, thank you. We now need to deal with the remaining items on the Order of Business in accordance with Standing Order 19. So for each of the, I think there are two motions to be considered. And I will ask the mover if they wished it to be deferred or merely voted on by, I was going to say a show of hands, that was a bit silly, this evening. So councillor King, your motion on transplants, do you want it to be deferred or voted on? Go to the vote. So will you take your devices up again, please? I think this is vote number four. Is the motion agreed? Come on, order, please, order. Is the motion agreed, is the question? So order, please. So that motion is falls. And if we can move on to agenda item 18, can I ask councillor Donnelly whether he wishes this to be deferred or voted on? Councillor Donnelly is asking if this motion can be voted on. So if you refresh your devices. And I think it's vote number five now. Is the motion agreed? Everyone happy the vote's been recorded? Yes, okay, so again, that motion falls. Okay, that concludes the business for the evening, colleagues. The next meeting is on Wednesday, the 8th of January. So may I wish you the compliments of the season, whether it be Christmas or whatever other festival there is between now and then. Thank you very much.